Why you catch up?
All right, we're called to order the Banner County Board of Equalization at 8:32, May 20th. Roll call.
Don?
Present.
Robin?
Here.
Lee?
Present.
Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the courtroom by the entrance. Item four, consent agenda items.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Don?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Item six, public comments. The Banner County Board of Equalization will receive public comments on items of discussion at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future Banner County Board of Equalization meeting. The board will not act and or respond to comments presented on this date. You will have three minutes after stating your name and address for the public record. Do we have any public comments for the Banner County Board of Equalization?
Morning, Zane.
Morning.
Morning, Eric.
Morning.
We will adjourn the Banner County Board of Equalization at 8:33.
Did I send you two a copy of the budget? After I got it inputted?
I have one, but I haven't sent it, I guess.
I got one from the road department this morning as to what they're saying. They've used what's remaining.
And I can email that to you right now if you want, but you... But I'm pretty sure it's probably the same.
Want to see it? What they, what the road department has. I've got it all out of order.
This was the... I just caught up the spreadsheets on the budget. And like, our expenditures. Through the last meeting.
Good morning, Tim.
Good morning, Tim.
How are you today?
You'll be available tomorrow at nine o'clock for a fire... Got one of the fire guys is coming here.
That should be. Okay. Remind me.
Okay.
Do you want to see that? That's the road department's.
Not right now.
I can't send you just the roads or you can get the whole...
Whole man yards.
And my computer.
Did you see the little booklet I left for you?
Hmm?
Did you see the little booklet I left here?
You passing those out? So which one?
Is there kind of an interest?
You think?
Yeah, it's not going to happen right now. We're talking about the right target. I would go to you this afternoon. I want to say it was like at 58% overall. Hey, Jay.
Good morning. Do you want to copy the results of the whole and all the house issues? Copy of you executives.
The bids were that well?
That well, is she on the front and then the other one, like her way. And then the back three of the engineering studies. Aren't you copying any of these?
It'd be good to have one.
Thank you, Jay.
It appears this JEO is only for one of these projects.
That, uh, the road E18. The other ones, he said they're just tubes right around that $1,500 range, depending.
He'll explain that. So JEOs actually are a little good? Based upon that?
But he is not... He doesn't have the scope of the five million fix to the 10 million fix to the $21 fix. Because when I contacted them and they did this, then the parameters changed for what we needed.
Okay. So this is just for the tube on 18 on the erosion off the hill? Per the Air Force?
Per the Air Force, which is that...
Morning, Jay.
Fixing over the...
How are you?
Okay.
Is it...
Can't see it.
You'll explain more when asked, I guess.
Are these three the same? Did you guys get copies of these or do I have all three copies? Are these the same, Jay, or do I need to share?
No, there should be... No, those are the same.
Okay. I didn't read details. Like, these culverts on 18. Aren't those all in there?
As far as...
That's different than the whole warehouse thing, right?
Completely separate.
Because it's a whole different room.
Yep. So this is what the Air Force had requested us to take care of so that they can change some of the grade and fix some of the issues.
That makes sense.
So the consulting, all the consulting stuff, JEO, the MCS, and all the trees, all...
Maybe if I did the rest of them.
But the bids are also very different because some of them are not... Some of them are very complete, some of them are not. So we'll get into that as to what we're going to do.
And that's the warehouse.
Well, this was just to get quotes on what a dollar amount to put into the budget for next year, not to actually do the jobs.
Right. Of where?
So that's why they weren't going...
And we're not going to do any of this till the new budget is the, is the idea. That's what we set out as a plan, so we would do it after the new budget comes out and then we have items in the budget to cover this.
Which one are you talking about?
The JEO MCS road creek. Onto the studies.
Okay, then.
Because we don't, we don't have enough funds into our hydraulic study to cover it. So this is something that's coming up. This is something we have to address on the budget.
I don't. Do you want me to make a copy? Thank you, sir. This goes with these, correct? That's Air Force stuff.
Just getting PP's back. Because all these hydroics ready or... They came at different times and they had different scopes of what... The base came up and...
All three of these, once, just for my information, all three of these are the same projects?
They're... No.
This is only road 18?
That's only the one tube on 18. No, that's only one, that's only one part. And then there's some... And we'll explain that immediately as to what... What's lacking onto each one of the bids. We requested these studies at different times and therefore they're not all compiling.
Got you.
Accurate?
It's an answer.
Yeah. But we have an overview of what the additional would be. See, I think we have $7,000 on the budget currently for hydraulic studies. And the one tube is going to take all of that and then some to fix that issue. But if we fix that issue, then the Air Force, if we fix that part of the issue, the Air Force will...
What? Which tube are you talking about?
18. 18.
Well, it's down below in the middle?
On the, on the hill.
Up on the hill, the erosion issue?
Yes.
No, you're mistaken.
How so?
It's just we need to get engineering studies done to shrewd to them that it is out of our scope of handling any of it.
Correct.
So we would, we would not be doing any of it.
No, we won't be doing any of it. They will be doing it.
Yeah, because it's out of our wheelhouse.
Correct. Yep. So our end of this is to do the study so that they can repair it. No, I'm on the same page with you.
The way, the way it sounded is that you wanted it... That we were going to do part of the part of it and then they were going to come in and finish it. Isn't that...
No, so if we do the study, they will, they will do the work. And there is, according to what Tom had left the impression with me, that there's a chance that we could recoup some of that money.
I haven't heard that before.
I understand. Uh, when I rode around with him, that's what we had, we were discussing. So we may or may not get reimbursed for part of it, but if they're willing to do several million dollars worth of work for us to do a $25,000 study, for example, that's the, that's the point. Different because everyone's different. That's why we didn't have to know that this stands. That one was outstanding. That's why we didn't do it last meeting.
Red, like the color red, not red, like...
All right, are you guys good to start?
Let's go.
We're called to order the Banner County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, May 20th at 8:47. Roll call, please.
Don?
Present.
Robin?
Here.
Lee?
Present.
Item three, Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the courtroom by the entrance. Would one of you lead us in prayer, please?
Father, we just ask for your guidance today as we do the business of people of Banner County. Help us to be wise in how we spend the money and in the things we do in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
And pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda?
To approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Don?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes of May 6th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of May 6, 2025. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Don?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Item eight, correspondence. Did we have any, Katie? I don't see.
No.
Item nine, public comments. The Banner County Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future Banner County Board of Commissioners meeting. The board will not act and or respond on comments presented on this date. Please try and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comments for the Banner County Board of Commissioners? Yes, ma'am. Would you please come to the... We're live streaming now, so we need everyone speaking to come to the microphone so that our people live streaming can see and hear you.
I can assure you they will be able to hear me. I'm not sure if I want them to see me.
And we just need your name. We don't need your echoes.
Good morning. I am Sheila Newell, landowner and taxpayer here in Banner County. In your opening, you stated that the Opens Meeting Act is posted. Unfortunately, posting the Opens Meeting Act apparently does not mean that you, the Board of Commissioners, abide by the Opens Meeting Act. For the record, here, the Board of Commissioners have violated Nebraska Statute 84-1412, number eight. Public bodies shall make available at the meeting for examination and copying by members of the public at least one copy of all producible written materials to be discussed at an open meeting, either in paper or electronic form. In addition, for the record, to preserve my objection that a public body failed to make documents available at the public meeting, I, who am attending this public meeting, must not only object to the violation, but I must make that objection to the public body. Again, for the record, you, the Board of Commissioners, are the public body. This violation almost also impacts the county clerk's duties as required by statute. The county clerk shall attend the sessions of the county board, shall keep the sealed records and papers of the board. Not providing the clerk with the documents discussed and or acted upon by you, the county board is in violation of Statute 23-1301 and 23-1302, which states it shall be the general duty of the county clerk to preserve and file all accounts acted upon by the board. I requested a copy of the one and six-year road plan yesterday, and I was informed that the clerk's office did not have it. The hearing was September 3rd of the last year. Apparently, J-Dub did not provide the clerk with a copy at the hearing. Again, this is a violation of the state statutes. The agenda item, bids for Woodhouse location, was tabled from last meeting to today. This information is not sufficiently descriptive to give the public reasonable notice of the matters to be considered at the meeting. This is in accordance with Statute 84-1411, number one. The intent of this is to require public bodies to include sufficient detail in their agendas regarding issues to be discussed or acted upon so as to provide information and notice to the public. Please refer to Hensmeyer versus Nebraska Public Power District in a Nebraska appellate court. Since I heard through the grapevine that the bids for the Woodhouse location, I decided to travel to the Woodhouse location. For the record, the landowner's name years ago was Woodhouse. Today, the land legal described as the southeast quarter of 351858 is owned by MJC Limited LLC with an address of Wyoming. The parcel ID number is 040018156. This is located on County Road 14 East. There is a storage building and a stacked straw adjacent to the county's fuel tank. I do have photos. I then find out that possibly a commissioner leases this ground. For the record, that is a direct violation of the Accountability and Disclosure Act. That commissioner should not have put this on the agenda, and furthermore, the commissioner needed to disclose that he had a direct conflict of interest at the beginning of the agenda item and not participate in any discussion. To make matters worse, the county does not have a lease and has a fuel tank, a trailer, with barricades and a road grader on this land. The county needs to remove all personal property immediately. Since the county does not have a lease, there is no insurance on this land for liability and you are open yourself up to a potential lawsuit. There is a reason for most county statutes. Within two calendar months after the close of each fiscal year, each county board shall make or cause to be made, acknowledged with under oath, and filed with the county clerk of such county an inventory state of all real estate and real property in which such county has any interest of any kind. Such inventory shall set forth a description of such properties with sufficient details that the property may be identified in the records of the Register of Deeds and shall set forth, if within an area in which the property abuts a street or a road, the street or road and number of such property, and shall set forth the use being made of such property. The county clerk shall retain this inventory for filing as a public record. This is Statute 23-348.01, and you, as the county board, have failed to file such inventory report, which is also under Statute 23-350. Let's continue with my travel on County Road 14 West. I continued westward from the Woodhouse location and thought I would just turn around at the next crossroad. In less than ten, in less than three miles, I found a crossroad, but I had no idea what county road was north and south, as there was no roadside. I decided to turn around, and as I turned north, I saw road barricades laying in the ditch on the west side. I then saw T-Post bent on County Road 14, assuming it was for the covert. It was to the west and the south of this intersection. Just when I thought it could not get any worse, I see a broken covert laying in the ditch on the south side. I again have photos. I decided to go back east until I could find a crossroad with signs and head home. I did not want to take County Road 14, as my vehicle and my patience could not handle the condition of this road. However, I use County Road 14 East, and it is worse. I have tried three different vehicles in an attempt to not be thrown from one side to the other. I cannot drive the speed limit under normal conditions. I have tried putting weights in the back of my pickup, and that does not help. There has been an orange flag in the shoulder for over two weeks. I now have a speed bump at the autogate entrance to my property where, which is where the county road ends. This is from the road grader simply lifting up the blade, turning around, and not smoothing out what he dumped. Due to the lack of supervision and no adequate management practices, the road department is going to hell in a handbag. Hopefully, the new road superintendent can make a fast U-turn and get the roads back to the condition they were over a year ago. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Sheila, you listed some statutes in there, and I'm kind of a slow writer. Get the ones you mentioned again, just the statute numbers. Sorry.
Opened meaning in.
Which is?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four dash fourteen oh seven through fourteen... Fourteen? Don't know that, but you violated eighty-four dash fourteen twelve, number eight. Eighty-four dash fourteen eleven, number one. Statute 231301 and 231302. The Accountably, Accountability and Disclosure Act. Twenty-three dash three forty-eight oh one and twenty-three dash three fifty. And I do not have the statute for accountability disclosure, but I do have copies, so you can have that. Mark, and let's pass one to Katie, just so she has it. Thank you, Sheila, without all of them. That I can find. I didn't highlight them. So good we can look them up. Um, my only comment to this is we have a new superintendent, just came on board a week ago, I want to say. So I'd like to get this to him as far as the road items. Give his input, kick it to his corner.
He's sitting right back there.
Well, let's, let's get, let him get his...
Would you like me to come back up?
If you have comments, sure, Eric.
On the road issues, um, I appreciate the comments, by the way. I really do. Because we don't always drive the roads every single day. So if we don't get calls in, you know, we can't handle them timely fashion. So we've already implemented a call log. We've already started that, so whenever we get a call come in, then we will, we are tracking the calls already and what the issues are and what the results are. So we've already implemented that, and then two weeks have been here. So that's one of the steps to help everybody in the general public, you know, feel like their concerns are being heard. Is there anything else you'd like? By chances, the, the road complaints, are they on that? She? She, because I would like to have a copy of that if possible. Of everything that you?
I will, I can, I can have. You can have a copy of this. I'll get a copy to Katie, will that help?
Yes, because then we can put it in the file.
Okay.
So that way we make sure stuff is resolved in a timely fashion.
I can get it to Katie.
Okay. Here's the other option, too. I did drive some of our county roads, so we are implementing a new sign program. Jay's got it going on, so we have within a few years to accommodate all of our sign. I noticed that some of our, they're technically an E450, which is our street signs, which everybody calls them 911 signs. So some of them are faded because of the sun. So we are in a program already that Jay's got started to implement those new signs, because we have seen them, so we're, that is, that is going to be handled. And Jay's been doing a good job on, on the signs, stuff already, so that's part of our sign audit that we already had, so that's coming up. So we are getting those handled. Okay? Is there anything else on that coming?
No, thank you for coming.
Thanks.
I was not aware there was a fuel tank on this property.
Has been for years.
But I don't, don't either?
Probably had any. Right.
As far as the other statutes you mentioned, Sheila, let's put those on the agenda for the next meeting, if you would please, Katie, because I would like to address those as well. We need to, if we're doing something wrong, if we're not providing the public with the information we need, thank you for making us aware of that, and we will work to correct that. Everything that you have on your agenda for discussion, a copy of that information needs to be provided to the general public at the meeting.
Sheila, can I ask you a question? So everything, the attachments that go with the items on the agenda, all the supporting documentation has to be put back with the agendas available to the public?
At least one copy needs to be back there.
Okay.
For public, general public inspection. You have to have a copy as the clerk of everything.
Okay.
Guys, questions?
Move on.
Do we have any more public comments for the Banner County Board of Commissioners?
Can I just ask a quick question, since you're talking?
Speak real loud, Judy. Like, we need your name and, and preferably the microphone, so people online can hear you. Sorry.
Is what Sheila's asking, Judy Schulp, is in the agenda, which I read this time, you know, from last time, the Woodhouse? Is she saying that that needed to be more descriptive? Is that?
Yes.
For the county?
Yes.
Because I actually called and asked that question, or I wouldn't have known. But that needs to be in the minutes, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Needs to be on the agenda, and the intent is to require public bodies to include sufficient detail in their agendas regarding issues to be discussed or acted upon so as to provide information and notice to the public. Okay, any further public comments? Thank you, Sheila, for bringing this to our attention. I appreciate it. No more public comments, we will move on to reports. Highway, Highway Department. Just a note on the agenda, in the future, can we split the Highway Department and the Weed Department, since we have a superintendent now? We'll let Mr. McCoy report on the roads, and then Mr. Grubbs when it comes to weeds. Does that work, Katie?
Yep.
Okay. So Highway Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Eric McCoy, Banner County Superintendent. Yeah, sounds good. I like to say that. It's really good to be a part of the county. So I've been doing some of my own audits, right? We have to do that now and again. So I've been driving our roads to check out some of our one and six programs that we're doing, and some of them we have half completed, some are not yet started, which, which is fine, depending on the weather of the year, sometimes that stuff happens. So like I said before, we've started a few implementations, you know, we've started a few things, the call log. We've already been working on the one and six. Are you guys wanting that to get back started on July 1st of the year? That's usually when it goes.
The one and six?
The one and six.
You do know we haven't prepared that yet this year, right?
No, that's okay. I've been doing our part.
Okay.
Don't worry. So when we get to that point, I would like to maybe put it on the next meeting, so we start going to get prepared for that. Are you guys okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then we'll have the, we'll post it, so we'll have a town hall meeting. You know, I would like to do it maybe the first, July 1st, if that's okay, but we can, we can adjust all of that depending on timeframe, I understand that, to get back on track.
How about you just set that up with Katie, Eric, and then what works for you, and we'll go with it.
It'd most likely be an evening thing, so when everybody gets off of work, everybody can come in and if they have concerns or things that they think they need to be done in accounting, then we'll address it, and then we'll bring it to you guys, and then we'll see if we need to address it further to make it part of the one and six thing, or if it's just a maintenance program or whatever we need to do. Okay? So on a couple of equipment things that we have going, I have a couple quotes from NMC. One is on our loader, our cat loader, that needs some center pins redone, and unfortunately, we won't be able to do it this year because of the budget timeframe. So I do have quotes for that, and it's for the worst-case scenario, so, and that's for $24,000 to redo the pins, which I think is a pretty, a good bargain for how good that piece of equipment is. I think we should look into that before it gets worse. And I have copies for you guys. So I will give you guys that before I leave. The next one we have is on the new M motor grader that we have. I would like to extend the warranty on that to powertrain and hydraulics, just so we get a little bit more familiar with that machine, so it doesn't cost the county more money long-term. And the way that is, is they've got two versions of it, 12 months for a thousand bucks, or 1,000 hours, and that is 3416. Or there's a 12-month, 2,000 hours, which I have to talk to Tim to see which, what we're putting on per, in our 12 months on that machine. The other one is 6,494. So for $6,000, even if it was a higher one, to save us $75,000, I think that's probably a pretty good investment for the next 12 months. So I have a copy for you guys on that also.
Does, does that work? Do you cover electronic parts in there?
No, it's just, it's just going to be for powertrain and that, hydraulics.
Basically, anything more on it?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
And I think that's a really good program, because we did buy that piece of equipment you used, correct?
Yep.
So sometimes we never quite understand what people hire, you know, to us on their record-keeping and whatnot. So the other thing is our fuel and gas. There was a miscalculation on the fuel. I went back to the last three years. The bid that we have currently for this year is for $15,500 and $9,900 gallons for the gas. And we need to move, go back to what we had last year, and it's 45,000 gallons for the diesel and $12,000 for the unleaded gas. And we may have to move up the unleaded gas just a little bit, because the school bought some more gas-burning vehicles for the buses, or transportation for the kids, I should say. So I've talked to Casey with Heimbluff, and he said there's no adjustment to this, we just need to change the numbers. Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Because it doesn't, will cost us more, less, it just, we just need to add more fuel to our.
So we bid the price, is what we bid?
We bid the price, but we only bid.
Did you guys use the microphones?
We only bid the county's gallons that we were using. We did not bid the school's part, correct?
And we bid the gas and fuel.
For the school.
For the school, and the school bids our propane, is that right?
That's my understanding of it, yes. So we just needed a little bit of adjustment. It's not a major thing, just, I just want to make it aware to you guys that we're making a change. The other thing is, is we really need to get a laptop for the road department, and I have a bites bid for that, and it'll be $1,00925, which I think we might be over $300 on that line item, but we're well under our yearly budget. So I think you'd be okay with that, if you guys are all right. The other thing, in the future, because of our sign audit program that we're, Jay's already started, that we're going to implement even stronger, we need to do, next budget, probably get an iPad. I've already talked to LTAP, and we're going to implement another program where we can run, when the guys are out, they can actually input on the iPad, so that it'll all be digital. So it'll keep a running tab of every asset that we have on the road. And it could, it'll be even culverts, bridges, everything, not just only signs. So it'll help us long-term for getting bids on hydraulic studies and everything that we need. The other issue that we talked about was a pickup from surplus. I searched right now, they've got four really nice vehicles, but I picked the best one that'll suit us for the county, and that, I have copies for you guys, and that'll be $24,900, which is under our budget that we have. We have $25,000, so it'll be under. I've talked to Zane already and Tim. They are going to go together when Zane go get, goes to get his vehicle, they're going to ride together and grab that. And I had Tim go down there for a reason, because he is our maintenance, he's our shop foreman, so he can go through that without driving it home and finding out we've made a mistake. So, and then we have a 1997 Chevy half-ton. Right now, apparently, it's, needs a little bit of work. So I would like to ask if we can surplus that pickup. Instead of using Big Iron, I'd like to use Purple Wave, because Purple Wave does not charge us a fee for, because we're a county entity. And since we are buying one, I always feel that if we have a pickup that's not needed, I feel that a lot of times it's best to surplus our, get a revolving surplus going ourselves, because sometimes we keep stuff a little bit too long as a county, a lot of times we do. I think it's got 200, two, over 200,000 miles on it, so, and it's, it's been worked on before. So I would encourage us to surplus that. And if Zane's in, or Zane and Tim are in at the, at the surplus store, I would like us to pick up a welder also to go back in the back of our service pickup. It's, the one we have is old, it's not doing this job very well, and for 1,500 bucks, we can get a welder that comes on a trailer if we need it. So it actually comes with the trailer, so for 1,500 bucks, and I didn't price the new one, but I would, I would believe that we'd be looking up to like 3,000 minimum just for the welder. Is there any other question you guys have for me?
I probably just mostly have a comment. And my comment's going to be our budget. We're closing in on the end of the budget year. We just came off, did you go to the budget workshop down in O'Leary? Just coming off of that, the county budget works much like a personal business budget, the way I see it, and you guys correct me, I understood this wrong. We have the money in the budget. That doesn't mean our treasurer has the money. So we need to, and I, and I'm not talking about the hundred-dollar desk, or the, even the $2,000 bites laptop for the 1,500-dollar welder, but when we go buying a car for the sheriff, because he needs three cars, and we go buying a pickup, and granted, we've been trying to rebuild those pickups in the road. Those, we're now up towards $50,000 in this budget, and we need to work with the treasurer, over there. We need to work with the treasurer to be sure those funds are there before we spend them. I know they're in the budget, and you're not going to go over a budget item line.
Yep.
I get that. But we've got to be sure the funds are there, and then as we roll into the new budget, I'm not real willing, and I doubt the taxpayers are, that we increase that levy a lot for things that we don't have to have.
Sure. So one of the questions I have for you, and maybe I heard this wrong, but I heard our new increase instead of 3% is up to 5.1%.
On the, on the budget?
And I would encourage, and I know some people are going to be upset with increasing it to 5.1%, but I would encourage the county, the board, to ask or to want to go to 5.1%, because next year it might be 0%.
Right.
So if we can take whatever we can get, because in the future, it might be, not might, it might not be next year, it could be two years from now, we have 0%. So that's going to cost us long-term to want to keep employees, right? Because everybody would like to raise on performance, right? I mean, there's a lot of things, I understand, and when taxes go up and stuff, it's not the best. But to keep us running smoothly or in a better pace, I think it would be in our best interest to get everything that we can this next coming year. Is this something?
I agree with that, but I, I don't see how we're going to do 60,000.
Because we do do a couple of things, don't we?
We do, and we need to keep improving, and we've, we've worked on that in the past.
Yeah, on the budget.
But like I say, my concern is working with the treasurer. And last year, when we did the budget for 2324, we worked with the treasurer, however, there was a $70,000 discrepancy in that budget, which set us way into a township.
And she was one of the ladies I was going to talk to before we actually finalized. Basically, we haven't bought anything, it's on hold. Okay, so we can, we can take that off at any time. So my goal is to talk with you guys, make sure that we're on track, and we have the money in the budget to purchase. I know it's late in the year, but if we can make that happen, that'd probably be the best.
Kathy, would be your one to talk to?
At this point, the road department signs are standing, we're very, very good.
Do you want to come up, so everyone can hear you, Kathy?
So at this point, the road department signs are doing very well. They have the payment money that came in also, and going into the budget, at the end of the year, I've never seen it this high. We've got highway allocations, our spending has gone down. Doing our own maintenance on the vehicles has really helped a lot on that, and I have not seen the road departments, they have, well, the general, have almost a million dollars in there at this point. And so I am comfortable with what Eric is proposing concerning the funds that we have at the road department at this time.
For this year?
Yes, for this year, yeah.
And I, and you're good about giving us that fund balance?
Absolutely.
The first meeting of the month, that's why we didn't get it today.
I gave it to you on the last meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
No, because you just came off vacation and...
Oh, I have it, then I'll make copies for you. I thought I did.
If you just want to scan an email, are you guys good with that?
You guys fine with that? Okay. But at this point, we have over 900,000 some odd dollars in the road department. So we're doing quite well on that.
And you and the treasurer and the clerk, do you guys balance yet?
Yes, we balance.
Okay.
Yes.
So we need to see that?
Oh, okay.
Not, not every meeting?
I don't know, have anything to say?
But the first meeting of the month, if we could get the fund balance report from you, and the current expenditure report from the clerk, then you guys can show us that you balance. If you don't balance, then we need to know why.
Yeah.
Because I'm not going to run into that $70,000 thing on the budget again, that dings our taxpayers too much.
Yeah, we've gone back and balanced to January of this year, and so, yeah, we've been doing quite, I'm really happy, we're doing very well with that.
Okay.
And so, yeah. But is there any other? But is there any other thoughts or questions?
Thank you for that information.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Great, Kathy.
Is, is there anything else that I need to clarify for you guys?
Does each paper put the same?
Uh, yeah, every piece is the same, so if you could just take one and pass it down, it should make it all the way to the end. It should. If not, I will give you copies.
Robin, would you look in your folder and see if that fund balance, I printed it for you.
Did you?
Would you look in your folder and see if that happened to be me?
You did, because I have my copy.
I haven't, honestly, I've been through every piece of it, Kathy.
Yeah, I was thinking I did, and...
Anything else on the discussions for me?
You guys have anything for Eric?
I don't.
Thank you, Eric.
Are we gonna do another piece, 'cause was, uh, another item later on, or do you want me to come back up to that later?
We have a lot of road stuff on site, if you don't mind hanging around, if you have the time.
Yep, I will, I will take a seat.
Yeah, we have, uh, road superintendent salary, we have the JEO, we have the wood house, and then a discussion. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Is it in the staple part, Katie, or is it separate?
What?
The fund balance report Kathy was talking about.
You got him at the, the last meeting.
No, because Kathy just came off vacation.
No, but I had balanced before I left.
If you had just scanned and emailed us a current one?
Yeah, I'll send you another copy, but yeah.
Just the current one would be good.
Yeah. I thought I put them in there, 'cause I balanced right when I came back. We just haven't been able to balance together yet at that time, but I did balance out for the month, so, yeah.
Find my agenda. All right, weed department, Tim?
No report.
Commissioners, cinnamon asked us if any one of us had longer than, say, five minutes. Let's bump us to the back, so people can go back to work.
Nope. I'm not gonna take that one.
All right, sounds good. Dawn?
Uh, most meetings are just normal stuff, go through their bills, they have reports for us. Um, buildings and grounds, tomorrow, we will have Ed Yarnover here to talk about the fire system. Tim and I will be here, and hopefully Chelsea can catch up with us on that as well. I think our idea was to get a bid in this budget cycle and plan for it in the next budget cycles, that's still where we're at.
Yeah, I think that's what your recommendation was.
So, I'll, should, should have, uh, I would hope a formal bid. I contacted another group that does these kind of things, but I contacted them twice now, they failed to show up, so I, I don't know how to handle that, but I think we're good. You know, this is a specialty deal, so, uh, receiving one bid's not a bad thing necessarily. It's within the rules. Let's see, I, I think that's all I have for buildings and grounds.
All right, sounds good. Region twenty-two, emergency management, we're currently now working on the budget, we had a budget workshop on Monday. Um, that's about where they're at. The budget for the commissioner, Banner County budget, we're gonna get started working on that. I might remind the officials that you'll be getting an email with a budget form for your office to fill out. I'll get those out directly, uh, fill the form out, scan, and send that back to all three commissioners. And, um, those are due by June sixteenth. So, if you would get those budgets, your budgets, your office budgets back to us by June sixteenth, would be great. Scan and email's the best way to do that. Website, don't really have anything on the website. Um, I'm working on getting our resolutions on there. They're kind of a, a mess on there right now, and I need to create some new tabs to get those up, but that's my intention, is to get those resolutions up on the website soon. And that's all I got.
Okay, mine will be short, too. Um, Office of Aging and Region One Behavioral Health, I did not attend those meetings as I was in York, Nebraska for a budget workshop. Uh, road department, I think, was pretty well covered.
I did attend the aging office for you.
Oh, did you? Oh, that's right, you did.
It was a block away or something.
Yeah, you did.
That's right.
Good meeting?
Yep. Good conversation. Good discussion.
Always is.
All right, Leif, do you want us to leave road department under your name, now that we have Eric on board?
You don't necessarily have to, no.
Would you like to pick up something else?
If there's something else that needs picked up?
Okay.
Happy to do it.
Guys good to move forward?
I am.
Item eleven, items of business before the board, road superintendent salary, wages, and benefits. Uh... Do we have a proposal on this? I know we, so, how this worked out, we did interviews, we offered Mr. McCoy the job, you're coming up, Eric, offered Mr. McCoy the job at twenty-seven fifty an hour, starting. Uh, Mr. McCoy came back with a counter offer of twenty-nine dollars an hour to start, and that's where we're at.
Okay.
I, this is just my thought, my opinion, I would like to start Mr. McCoy at twenty-seven fifty an hour for a probationary period of six months, and reevaluate at that point in time. I will say I was not in favor of a part-time superintendent, so if I'm willing to go twenty-seven fifty a month for six months, for you to prove to me that this is a part-time position, and it will work.
Well, I hope I've already put that in two weeks.
I'm...
Right?
I'm not sure.
So, um, you know, not, not only do you get me a superintendent, you get me as an employee. So, I, I value what I do very, very highly, I just hope you guys understand that, too. So...
Your thoughts on the twenty-seven fifty for six months, this is kind of where we can discuss?
Um, so, if I looked at the, how long is the, in the handbook, how long is the probationary period? Is it three months?
I would have to look that up.
I think it's ninety days.
That's accurate.
I think it's ninety days.
Six months? Isn't that sad I know that? Yeah, it is.
So, is it six months? Okay. Unfortunately, I was reading a handbook that was not adopted. So, I spent hours reading a handbook, and then found out that most of the stuff I was reading was gone.
Casey would be your girl to see.
So, I, I already got a new copy, after I spent a few nights reading, copy that was not adopted, so. Um, and, you know, I think, if that's, if that's where you guys stand, then I think that'd be fine with me.
That's just my opinion, Eric. I mean, these two need to have their input as well, that's just my thought.
Ninety days, that's what it looks like, yeah.
Ninety days.
Did it say ninety days?
Ninety days.
It'll be ninety days.
I'm glad, I'm glad I remembered something that I read. Um, so I would say after ninety days, let's reevaluate, and if you guys aren't happy, then let's move to six months. I'm okay with that, right? So, I think after ninety days, let's reevaluate. Um, because by the time ninety days is gonna be up, I don't know if your program's been ran like this before in a long time. Because the steps Chelsea's even making in there with some direction has changed considerably. So, um, I, my goal is to make sure that whomever steps into this role in future, right? Um, that gets up something that's fine-tuned and, and can run almost without them. I mean, that's what we try to do, I know that's not, you have to be there, I get that. But my job is to make it so that whoever shows up next has a, um, a good department to run. Okay? So, if you don't mind, let's look at it again in ninety days, and then we'll adjust. I, I don't think you'll be displeased.
And, and I'm impressed so far.
Okay.
I'll, I will say that, and I'm, I'm like you, I'm hoping, now this, or six months may not be part-time for you, technically.
It never is.
But once you get involved in everything, and I'm looking at maybe a year, then you might be able to have more downtime.
Sure. Um, yeah, and we'll, we'll discuss all that stuff later. Let's, let's get past these first ninety days, and then we'll go from there, how's that?
Eric?
Your guys' thoughts?
Fair. Yep. Yeah, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that, because that's just, that's my, it's business, I guess.
I appreciate it, Eric.
Anything else?
It's good to work with you, give us anything today.
You mean, you talk about the pickup now, or?
No, let's stay on the wage now, because that's what's topic we're on. Oh, a pickup would be a benefit. Let's, let's talk on the wage one. So, um, I will make a motion to hire Eric McCoy as the Banner County Road Superintendent for twenty-seven fifty per hour for ninety days, after ninety days, we'll reevaluate.
And that's just for the salary, correct?
That's just the salary, only the salary.
Well, all I can say in the advertising is...
And we're not into discussion yet, there's a motion on the table. I either need a second, or it's gonna fail.
I'll make the second.
It's been moved and seconded to hire Eric McCoy as the road superintendent for twenty-seven fifty per hour for ninety days, we'll, the board will reevaluate at that point in time. Any further discussion?
Well, we, uh, in our advertisement, said that we would provide a county work vehicle.
That's a benefit, Dawn.
Do whatever successful these are benefits.
We'll get to that in a minute.
Well, I'm gonna amend your motion to provide the road superintendent with a pickup.
That's coming up, it's a benefit, it's the next topic. If you don't mind, we're just doing wages right now, and then we'll do the benefits, you good with that, Eric?
Fine.
So, wait, you wanna separate wages and benefits? Can I withdraw my amendment?
Any further discussion? It's been moved in, seconded to approve Eric McCoy as Banner County Road Superintendent, twenty-seven fifty per hour for ninety days. Roll call vote, please.
Dawn?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Leif?
Yes.
Thank you, Eric, for working with us on that. All right, benefits, now we can talk about the pickup. The road superintendent benefits. Do you have a, do you currently have a pickup from Banner County?
Driving Jay's old, uh, Foreman truck, is that correct? It's a red, red pickup?
Yeah.
Who all has pickups in the county, like, I don't know?
Jay, Jay would have to ask. I, I myself has one, have one, after that, I don't know right now.
But you have Jay's, do you have a pickup, Jay?
Yes, I have the, I have a pickup at my disposal, and the, Tim does, the two Foremans, the super pen, we have a super pen.
Tim has a pickup? How about your outer line maintainer operators?
Uh, no, not. Been assigned vehicle to them to use, no.
Okay, and so we have three pickups assigned to our road employees, is that correct? Is there a, and Katie might be able to answer this question, do we charge them for a vehicle out of their salaries, or is it a benefit, as in a perk?
Um, according to the IRS, they have to be charged three dollars a day, or a dollar fifty for one way. Um, we don't really, um, there is only one person that does, and it's not for the full amount. Um, it is stated in our handbook that it's supposed to be done that way, the IRS also has it stated. Um, I did talk to Nirma and, um, the county auditor and the state's auditor. We, it is not required, but highly recommended, that there is a form that any employee that has a vehicle, they are supposed to fill out, um, this form on what days they have a vehicle, what's the mileage, and what is the use. Um, and then turn it in with their timesheet. It has never been done in Banner County. And when I talked to the state auditor, they said this is not good, because if the IRS were to ever audit, um, the excuse is, I didn't know a certain employee had a vehicle, will not work. And, um, the, and, and they said that just, it's better to have documentation, that way you can prove it in the end, if you do get audited. Not recommended, highly, highly, or not required, highly recommended, so, um...
Is that something you could look into, Eric?
We, we already do part of that already, just because of our fuel. So, we've already been putting in our, um, each person has their own fuel ID card, but we can upgrade it, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I think Katie would be the one, the clerk needs to be the one to get that information, for payroll-wise, if you would look into that for us. And, and just use your discretion on that, hold on just a second, Sheila, hold that thought. If you would look into that for us, and kind of look back. Did that answer your question?
No, not at all.
You do have a pickup, but we are short a pickup, correct? Because you have Jay's. I'm sorry?
Technically, we're short several.
Because we sold some of the surplus.
Correct.
And we need to sell the one that Eric mentioned, so, and we've needed to replenish these pickups. For the county, they were, that was much needed.
What happened to the pickup that you, that was...
Kathy, hold on just a second.
Okay.
Sheila, did you have a comment?
I had a question, which pickup is the new, who's driving the newest pickup? That should be the road superintendent. I'm sorry, the newest pickup should be the road superintendent, and I don't...
So, technically, in seven days, we're going to have that happen?
Technically, well, okay.
So, sorry, I don't, I don't wanna sound rude, but in, uh, the first of June, that will be the case.
Okay.
Okay, does, does that help?
Yes, I'm going. Three vehicles, and I'm going, one could be a seventy-nine, one could be a two thousand, and another one could be a twenty-twenty-three.
This one, this one's to get us, get Eric on board.
So, into, into the defensive J, I, I thought in my discretion, Jay should have had the newer pickup, because, uh, road foreman, he's gonna put way more miles on than I am, as I am part-time, okay? Um, so when Jay wears out that truck, then this truck will go down to Jay, and then so on and so forth. That's how I would like to run the program. Until we need one for Tim to do maintenance, then it would go back to Tim. So, that's how I would like to run our program.
It was just a question.
No, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear.
Okay.
Kathy, did you have a question?
Well, it's all good, she answered it.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Do you guys have anything further? I don't think, that doesn't require a motion or anything, because that was just a, that was just a given, that, that road superintendent would have a vehicle for travel. It was in our advertisement.
Correct.
And so we have to follow through with that.
Correct.
So, my only comment would be, the next meeting in June, the first meeting in June.
Here, Dawn.
We need to have an item added to the agenda that talks about our vehicles and vehicle use policy.
Why, I would like to kick that to Mr. McCoy's court for the road department, because he will oversee that, and I would like to use...
He follows policy.
No, but he can help us create that.
Absolutely, can help.
That's where I look to his guidance and that, and, because he would know better than any of us, that road department.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so, what I understand is you're gonna get a pickup, okay?
Yep.
And I'm fine with that, 'cause that's how we advertised it, so.
No problem here.
I don't think there's any voting needing to be done on that, I think we're, are you good with that, Eric?
I'm just fine with it, yeah.
Okay.
I'm pretty easygoing, so...
So, we're good there?
Yeah.
Good? Yeah, all right, thank you, Eric.
Yep.
JEO Consulting Group Agreement. Leif and Jay?
Okay, these are on to, these are under the bids for the hydraulic study, uh, as per requested per the, by the Air Force. Basically, what the Air Force is wanting us to do is...
Could you use the microphone?
Is wanting us, you can't hear me?
Well, I can, but I don't know that the online can, it needs to be over the microphone.
A, uh, okay, I'll speak a little louder. I would, uh...
A, uh, okay. I'll speak a little louder. Um, I would, uh, this is, this is what the Air Force had requested that our county look at doing to, uh, pave the way for them to fix some of our issues with our roads. Uh, this would be our end of this, so to speak, to where we would, uh, we would do the hydraulic study and then the county would, or the, the Air Force would repair these roads, is, is my basic understanding of this. Now, I'm not sure if that's going to include the, the project on sixty-one. Can you tell me if that include, if that's, would be considered under the Air Force as well?
Good morning, yes. Uh, Jay, I'm from Banner County Road Department. In regards to what Lee was talking about, the hydraulic studies on eighteen for the erosion control issue and for Wright Scap Road on the bridge issue, um, are out of our scope of capability of repairing. We don't have the equipment or the money to do it for the county. And that's where the DOD would come in. If we can show them on the hydraulic study that it's beyond our scope. Now, the tube issues, just putting culverts across the road, are within our scope of completing. And each one of them is, there's estimates on there for each one of those. They around, range around the fifteen hundred, twelve hundred dollar mark for each of those studies. And there's one, two, three, three different places that, on Air Force roads, that could stand to, two being put into the waters top of the road repeatedly in the last few years. Does that clarify any of that?
Yep.
Alright.
I, I have four. Am I looking at the right thing Jay? I have four for, um, Oak Creek Engineering and all four are for eighteen thousand, I can't remember here, eighteen thousand three hundred. All four of those are the same. Am I looking at the right thing?
Under Oak Creek?
Yeah. And then I have a J E Consulting Group for seventy-five, seven thousand five hundred. Am I looking at that right?
The JEO Consulting Group, um, is a, a very vague estimate because of the difference in the areas. They said most of the, you know, to do all three of the culverts was like around seventy-five hundred. To do the erosion control would start at seventy-five hundred. But depending on the depth that we're wanting the DOD to go with on the erosion control issue, it could go up drastically up to, you know, the fifteen thousand, like twenty thousand mark for that one. And all there was over the phone. They looked at Google Maps and they were wanting to come out and physically look at the locations and get an idea of what we're-
Bottom line, it's not a complete bid.
No, these are just estimates on, that we need to put into the budget for next year.
And these four from Oak Creek? Is that four separate ones at eighteen thousand three hundred a piece or is that-
No, I believe that was a lump total for all, for the three different, uh, sites.
So, I have three of the same copy, correct?
You must.
Four of the same copy. Should I only have one of these?
Yes.
Thanks. Sorry, I was getting confused. And that's for eighteen thousand. When was-
On the second page of the Oak Creek, it is wrote down on the top of the third paragraph, section, part eight, sites one, two, and three. For the culverts, roughly eighteen hundred. For the, um, erosion control issue is around at twelve thousand, six hundred dollar mark. And then for the bridge issue on Wright Scap was around thirty-nine hundred. And these all can, and probably will increase by some. It just all depends on what they do when they start doing the hydraulic study, what they're getting into. There was no way in them saying this is a flat rate deal.
Will this be on this budget or are we looking at-
We're looking at for next budget.
For next year's budget.
So, then when we first brought this up with the Air Force, uh, several months ago, I had been in contact with Tom, Nigel. Yeah, Tom, thank you, Tom Nigel. And he's, I had mentioned that we did not have enough funds in our balance at this point to make, to do these studies. We would, you know, if we get an idea of what it'll cost, we can now look at it for the next budget cycle. So, this would not be done until the new budget. But it's something that we will need to plan for if we wish to proceed and have the Air Force fix these trouble spots for us. We will have to plan for this. This is our end to, to take care of it through the Air Force.
Okay, so do we wait till the next budget or do we need to-
This is, basically, I think this is just informative only so that we have a dollar amount that we know we need to put into our next budget.
Yes.
Just information. It's not something we need to move on today.
This is not a vote today. No, this is not a vote today.
Okay, that was my question if we needed to pick a bit to get the ball rolling?
That's why these estimates are not per se complete and they're not three exact ones across the board because there were different projects that arose after the initial contact with JEO that we added to the list. So, this is just strictly an idea of monies that we need to budget for next year.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Yes ma'am?
I, I would recommend that, um, everything be turned over to the, or at least, um, work with our new Road Superintendent so he can, knows what he needs to do with his, with the budget. Eric?
Yep, we will be doing it.
Yes, and he is in the loop. This was just a project that started before he got the job. And I'm just trying to wrap up loose ends. So, he's not handed that-
But there's nothing exact or complete.
No, it's not. It's just rough ideas for the budget, is all it is.
And, and Eric will get a budget form that he can work with?
And you have copies of all these estimates? Good job.
Can I see a copy with you?
Would you like copies?
No, thank you.
Just asking. Alright, are you guys good with Jay on that topic?
I am.
Are you good on that Eric?
Good.
Thank you Jay.
Thank you.
A bid for wood house location, Lee.
Okay, so there are several different bids here for, uh, repairing a water well on this location. Now, as mentioned, uh, the county does not have a lease on this place. Has not had a lease on this place. So, I'm not sure if we want to-
I am stating for the record, you are in violation of accountability and disclosure.
How so?
Hold on. Sheila, do you want to make a comment?
I just did.
We, our public comment time is coming on long term.
I want to hear from our people Donald. They're at the meeting. I want to hear from them.
Follow the agenda.
Then run the, then run for chairman. Cause I want to hear from our people. If they have a comment, I want to-
That's fine. They have a specific time where they can comment. And as a point of information, that time is coming on.
I am not really sure how I'm violating the disclosure agreement here. I do not own this property. I don't-
Point of information. That has nothing to do with this.
Mark, do you have any input on this?
Accountability and disclosure is actually-
Donald, do you have Mark to talk?
I was talking first. Do I get a talk at all?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Accountability and disclosures is, is a whole different deal. What you file is none of my business. It doesn't have anything to do with this board. Hopefully, you filed good.
I hope so.
We all try and do the best we can, so.
I hope so. I, like, as I said, I, I don't own this property. Um, I don't even technically manage this property. I rent the farm ground on this property. That's the end of my liability on this property. This, uh, this particular site has been used by the county for probably ten plus years without, without an arrangement, without a lease, without anything. It's not a problem with the current landowner. It still is not a problem with the landowner. He's willing to lease the property to the county if we so wish for, for a zero dollar fee. But, uh, beyond that, no, I, I don't know. I don't know what I don't know. And at this point, I don't know what I have violated by, by speaking about this.
Well, it seems like we need to have a lease before we can proceed anywhere, so.
Agreed.
Am I able to talk now?
Yes ma'am.
The way I see it, I did not know there was a fuel tank on this property. I did not know we parked a motor grader on this property. We have county equipment now parked on private property. But the least thing in the accountability and disclosure, that's kind of, I would recommend Mark to give you advice on that one because that's kind of a personal thing that the only thing I care about is that we have county property on private land. And I believe that might be where Sheila's coming from. We can't have that.
Point of information, chair.
So, I'm talking on-
That's a, that's an interruptible point. We have, Jay, Jay has a pickup.
I'm gonna call a recess at eight fifty-third. Thank you so much.
You're on camera and microphone.
Yeah.
And I gotta go in five minutes. Hey Jay, you, you park your pickup in your driveway?
Yes, sir, it's on my-
When you drove a road grader, did you park it in your driveway?
Yes, sir.
Who owns the driveway?
Uh, my landlord.
Okay. Tim, you ever take a county pickup home?
I do not take a county pickup home.
How many other people do we have that drive graders home and park them in their private driveways?
We have at this point two, three, that are, two are part-time seasonal employees. And they have a road grader at their locations that they use once, twice a week, and then one full-time.
Do we plug, do we plug those in in the winter?
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
And we reimburse for the, the tugging?
We used to and that has not been done in the last two, three years. Cause they used to go off of a meter that they had that could read, but then they'd use that meter that count for everybody else. That meter broke and never had been fixed. So, some guys, you know, plug in all the time. Some guys only plug in in the mornings. Some guys, you know, have a timer on it. So, it's not, it's random. It's not fair that, you know, count for one person. It should be a, like the school does, a flat, you know, you plug it in, it's about fifty for that night or so.
I wouldn't take it.
No, that's fine.
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
Alright, you can move forward Lee.
Let's move forward.
Back in session nine fifty-six. Okay, so on this topic.
Okay.
What do you need from us today?
I don't know. I don't know what the board wants to do. We now have a problem on something that's never been a problem. So, I'm not sure exactly what exactly we're, we're, we're marking up.
Would you be okay to kick this into Eric's court again and let him do some research and get his feedback on this?
Sure.
Is Eric still out there saying, are you peeling?
I think he went through that.
Tim, would, do you mind relaying that to Eric or do you want me to catch him? If he would just look into this wood house issue with county equipment sitting on private land. If he would look into that and then we can-
Point is, county equipment sits on private land all the time.
Cause they park their motor graders at their-
Well, as soon as they take a motor grader home, the, the grader is parked on private land. I'm willing to bet that we do not have a lease with everybody, every operator in the county that has private land. So, I, I think it's kind of, if we need a lease on this place, the landowner is willing to write a lease.
Like a long-term?
Long-term lease. Um, this was a bid to put in a well service or to put wet water well in there for the county's benefit, for the county's use. I, I personally don't use it. Um, you know, and I, I would not use it. But, uh, that, that's what this is about. Now, if the county wishes to move the stuff off the, the wood house location, I'm willing to donate the county a useful, a useful place that has water, that is under security cameras, that has fuel tanks, the whole, that, that, that can be if needed. But, uh, yeah, this is, I don't even know where this is coming from. So, that's where I'm at.
Well, this was a surprise to me today on, and I knew about the motor graders on people's houses because they drive them home at night.
So, do we need a lease for everybody that has that? For every barricade, for every, every county piece of equipment that's parked at somebody's place? Do we need a lease for that? Is, that's the question.
I would like to kick it to Eric's court and maybe Eric can work with Mark and-
So, do we need one in this, in this instance?
In this instance, probably should.
If we're going to improve the, if we improve the property beyond where we're at?
In this instance, it probably should be leased. With employees taking equipment home, that's a different animal.
Okay.
Because that, that equipment's checked out their county employees.
So, if our county moved from the wood house location to my location on County Road Seven, which is under cameras that I pay for, which is, which has a water well, which we would not have to go to any of this extra expense, would that be an issue?
We'd still want a lease for that.
Perfect. I'll write one up. I'll do it.
Do you want to work with Eric on this Mark and give us a direction?
And I mean, if we wish to stay at the wood house location, that, that landowner is also willing to write up a lease.
Are you good with that? Kick it to their corner so we can do it the right way? So, we needed a well and electrical and that, correct?
There, there's electric there. They plug graders in. The county has control of the meter. It's the county's meter. You know, it's what runs the fuel tank. If they're gonna plug a grader in, there's, there's power source there.
Is that our only outer line fuel tank? I, I don't know. That's why I'm asking the question.
No.
Do we have one at-
No, we have others.
We have three outlying fuel tanks.
We have three? Where are they?
So, the East County shop on fifty-seven.
We own that one.
No.
We own the property.
No.
He leases.
We have a ninety-nine year lease on that.
From who?
Ron Brown.
I think it's a fifty, I think it's fifty years.
So, if I can interject.
Yes.
To start with, we got the county shop on Wright Scap. Uh, I believe we got a fifty year lease on that. I thought it was ninety-nine, but I believe we just renewed a fifty year lease.
Renewable in fifty year increments.
Yeah, and that was like in early two thousands. We did that. And I believe, unless you folks can, uh, educate me, I'm going off somebody else's memory. Uh, I think the county built the building down there on that property. There is a well on that property, fuel tank, of course, a pretty nice fuel installation, uh, loading dock. But we have a installation down there.
Are you talking where, John Wright wouldn't use it?
Yes, yes. So, we got precedent already set with that. And going back, way, way back, the county used to be divided into three districts, east, central, and west. The county has never had a west county shop. It was- It was always under a shade tree in somebody's corner of their building. The last one we had was, I believe, in the corner of a garage. Never had our own facility up there. If we were to proceed with this and actually get a long-term lease on this property, the county would have a location at that place. They would not have a, well, there is a building there that's arduable. But we would have a piece of property that we could call our own, that we could do a little bit more what we wish. So the third location is out of Rob Leaf's property on 88 West, Road 7. And he has a fuel tank at his house. And a grader works out at his house. Due to the location of the county shop in Harrisburg, it's not really conceivable to send all your maintainers out here. It's best to have them out there where they can work in that area.
A lot of roading.
Yes, yes. So we're trying to eliminate roading, which gets back to the pickup issues, but if we could, and what we have done is leave a machine there, they bring a pickup in, go out there, get in their machine, work that area, so. Does that answer?
It does. So we, we don't own any property on the East Shop? Or John Wright and you still?
Yes, the lease with Ron Brown.
Lease with Ron Brown.
Yeah.
I thought we owned that.
Part, and I don't know what we pay for that, but part of the agreement, there is a well there. Part of the agreement is we keep that well serviceable and supply water for his livestock next door.
Do we have a lease with Rob Leaf?
I don't know if there's anything on paper in there.
But that would just be the fuel tank.
But anytime you put a fuel tank, obviously you have the risk of a fuel leak. Not really spooky, but it would be in the county's interest if we're putting a machine, putting a fuel tank, to have something to write in to lay out our liabilities.
So this may not be the only location that we have an issue with?
No, I think, I think we ought to look at the whole.
The whole picture.
Do you think it's, we're trying to kick this to Eric and Mark and let us get all three of these locations on the same page?
I feel that way. I think we need to firm things up.
I have no problem with that. Now, if we wanted to move from wood house location, I am happy to volunteer a location that, that the county can use. And I'm willing to sign a lease for an extended period of time that the county can park the machines there. And it is a safe and secure location, and it has water, and it has cameras, it has everything already there.
Has eyes on it now, because at this location, there is no houses within a couple of miles. I believe we have had fuel stolen from there before, so.
Okay, yeah, if we can just get all three of them on the same. Do you have fuel at your house, Shane? Do you have a fuel tank at your house? No?
I have to come back here every, to get fuel.
You might mention that to Eric.
What?
Like, your place.
I think everybody's aware.
Let's get Eric on board. Get him with Mark.
I think everybody's aware of that on the, on the road department. Accurate, Jay? Yeah.
For roads, through them.
So.
What do you, what is the term for that place?
I call it Johnson Place.
Johnson Place.
But that's right off of County Road 7.
Okay, I good with that?
Yep.
Turn it over to Eric and Mark and Tim and Jay, and you guys can work. Work us toward a solution?
I don't know if that's going to get me in trouble with the disclosure, whatever.
That's a Mark question.
I'm not sure where that lies, but, you know, I'm not after any financial compensation for it on either location.
We don't pay anything on the lease, so.
What's that?
We don't pay anything.
Well, and I'm not looking for anything.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think on the one with Ron Brown, it's 150.
Go ahead.
I think he does get paid. It's only 100. If I read it, ready was 150 every 50 years.
And then, whatever, I think we pay the electric on the water, on the pump.
Yeah.
Okay, I learned something.
And is the county responsible for upkeep on the wells and stuff on the East Shop?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yep. Yes.
I thought we owned that. Eddie, that's why I was looking at your blank, because I was sort of revamping my thought. All right, we'll let Eric and Mark work on that. Tim and Jay. There he is. I'll let them fill in.
I missed in too much, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're good. I'll let them fill you in, Eric. Are you good to move forward?
I'm good.
Uh, road department discussion?
I don't think I've got anything additional. This is, we've covered it.
Did you have anything further, Eric?
I just would like that list of the young lady who was here complaining. I would like that list of what she has if we have them. She said she was going to give a copy to Katie.
That would be Sheila.
Sheila, yes. So sometime I'd like to get that copy.
Okay.
Mostly issues on Road 14 and the conditions, both east and west, is what I have in my notes.
I think with the last windstorm, you'll find that the sign has blown over on County Road 14 and 7. It was repaired yesterday. Okay. It was moved from the leaning post that was, and the signs were upgraded to. That's happened, that's happened fairly recently. I mean, I keep a good idea, I keep a good outlook on to that. I mean, that is my home territory. And I suppose with the frequent winds that we've been experiencing, that is what has taken that road sign down. So thank you for getting that fixed. Yeah.
Oh, I asked about that stop ahead sign. You asked, did you ask me about that, Jay? Somebody asked me, on the feedlot road, the stop ahead sign was missing. And I asked Wayne about it. He said it was in the ditch for a long time, but he hasn't seen it in a while. And there's another one up, so.
Yeah, we replaced it when we were doing the sign grant.
Yeah, I can't tell you where the old one went. It laid, apparently it laid there. I never.
I noticed it, I think, one time, a couple of weeks prior, that it was, had blown over or laying over. Which goes on the list. It's not a regulatory sign, so it's not a, it doesn't have to be done within 24 hours of notification.
Yeah, I just didn't know where your old one went, but it laid there for a while.
Somebody's got it for target practice or something.
It wasn't me. All right, are you good to move forward with claims, Lee?
Let's pay them.
All right, item 12, claims.
Thank you. You guys have a good day.
I'm going to scoot over so we can. Katie, I'm sorry about that, the flyover brewery thing. I was in Lincoln at the hospital with my dad, and I had no way to print and sign it, so as soon as I got to a printer to sign it, I got it back to you.
Yeah, she sent me a couple of emails and I had it coming out to you. Signed it to me, so.
Sorry, I landed at the other section, like, I have got.
Well, and I thought you had signed it before she left, like, the last meeting, so I didn't follow up on it, because I thought.
Usually we do.
Yeah, so it was, I didn't. It was my mistake, not following through on them.
I put everything down to one pile, right?
Have you seen these letters?
I saw the list and tour. I haven't went through the individual ones, though.
I can't hear you say. Let's look.
Carl said to, he has a claim in there. If you guys had any questions, you could give him a call.
Thank you.
Can I throw these up here?
Yep.
I think mine are pretty straightforward. I don't think you should have anything on mine. I don't think.
And those on your way, sorry?
No.
Trying to make you a pile. Want to take?
Yep.
Bert, do you need a copy of this lease agreement? Or the one?
For round?
Yeah.
I think I have one somewhere. If you've got one handy.
I know Casey showed it to me yesterday.
But I have, I'm thinking I have one, because it seems like we just renewed that about four years ago, maybe. I mean, it hasn't been that long.
So what's for a reading?
You could, I haven't seen.
These are paid, you signed these. I would assume, if we're not hearing about it.
I haven't heard anything, so I'm assuming got taken care of.
Did it work?
Can I steal these?
Taylor. Dude's actually stringing those around. Yeah. Yep. It's got the buds worked out.
How we doing? Got everything? Which one?
Carl's.
Oh, for survey?
It looks like in his notes that he would have some. And he's got budget remaining.
I'll get that email to you. My computer, my laptop died over here, so. I'll get that budget to you. Be the whole, you know, it won't have these claims in it. But it'll be fairly close, to give you an idea. Do you have a lease?
I am.
Do you want to hand these to Katie? She can start checking. I just don't want to miss signing a check. Wow. This was coming, this was one Carl and I.
Yep.
Carl talked to us about. It's going down substantially, hasn't it? Maybe it's because we got off the advertising. Just one of them? Are you good with the claims?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
I will second it. It's been moved and seconded to pay the claims as presented. Any further discussion? Do you have anything, Lee?
Nope.
I good to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I just adjourned.
Okay.
Banner County Water Commissioners adjourn 10:17.